Mark.
I thought I saw it.
Yeah, I saw a ghost on there.
I must don't let it move around too much no more.
You heard a lot of locker heads closed down.
What's that?
Locker heads closed down. So I saw on Facebook. Tap House gone, locker heads. A lot of locker heads is gone. That's on Facebook. Closed up. Tommy Franks mom put on Facebook.
I now call or order the budget work session of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, July twenty ninth, two thousand fourteen at six thirty roll call.
Mayor Archie.
Here.
Vice Mayor Larson.
Here.
Mr. Terrapini.
Here.
Mr. Banther.
Here.
Mr. Seaver.
Here.
We will now go to public comments on any item that will not be discussed this evening. Seeing none, we'll go to item number one, general fund budget discussion. The manager.
If I can, I'm going to start off with a short presentation to get us started in the process. Well, we're here again, another year and another budget. What I wanted to do is begin with is give you a brief presentation, really a look back into the history, to look back what's been happening with the budget, why we are where we are, and give you that presentation and then open it up. We've got staff here to whichever way we've done things, different ways with the budget of how we've handled it, whether it's questions, whether they're going line by line, however you want to do it. But I think this brief overview is good for everybody on the board, anybody watching, and to get people up to date on where we are. The first slide that we have and in your packet gives us a history of our millage rates and our revenue we've got. Going back to the beginning where everything started before the economic crash. As you see in two thousand seven, four point seven nine millage rate. And at that time, we were operating a full-service city on eight million one hundred and twenty-three thousand and change of revenue. We foresaw something not good coming in the economic realms. We decided to hold up on projects and we went through a series of several years where we really held back doing things. We cut positions, we froze positions to start with. And as you can see, we started to go down with the millage rate in two thousand eight, but it generated us less funds. From that point, we had to go up. And even though we went up in the millage rate, if you'll see in the other column, we started to drop in revenues. And where we leveled off at the five, four, five, which we have had for a series of years and where we're going now, you can see what happened staying at the five point four, five, what happened to us from a beginning of seven point three nine seven. We dropped seven million one ninety-two and then six million eight hundred and fifty-six. And then to our low, we bottomed out at running the same full-service city without cutting services noticeably, without a lot of the things that other cities went through to get through those times. We were operating the city at our low, that's six million seven hundred thousand from eight million one hundred and twenty-three thousand. And again, with that low, we were still sitting at a five, four, five millage rate. Obviously, this year, there's finally, we've seen the upturn with the property taxes. Many say, whoa, it's a big upturn, so we're coming out of problems. But you can see that all of that generated for us, we're only back to one, seven million one hundred and ten thousand, which believe me, it's a positive. I'm not, you know, I'm happy we're seeing that upswing. But still, the revenue to run this full-service city sees a full million dollars less than it was in two thousand seven when you run it. A better way to look at it, all those numbers and stuff, to sit there and look at it at a chart is, is there's the two charts there. You see where the millage rate we've had in the city is. And on the other side, you can see the comparative revenue. And you can see the dramatic drop in revenue. And even though we're starting that upswing, you can see where that revenue is, which again, brings us to this budget. We all know the staff here, our budget advisory committee, most of you of a commission knows how we dealt with the decrease in revenues. All these methods up here were what we used to, again, our attempt to keep services and to operate the city by doing those items. Our main commitment was to go to quality service, but we had to do a lot of things and we did them well, which is why we stayed operating all those years. The challenges, obviously, the challenges that we have is now, as the economy gets better, the demand for services is better. Just the applications starting to come in, the people are coming to us to talk about projects. Now the upswing's going, but that creates the bigger demand on services. And places where we have cut people, we are starting to feel it more. Obviously, the expenses, electric and expenses that we have no control over, they continue to come up. We always have to worry about unfunded mandates. And of course, our other revenue stream, aside from the property tax, we've got to worry about that declining or being stagnant. And of course, it always brings us back to the, to the main thing we worried about, the unassigned fund balance. As many call the reserve, that name got changed to unassigned fund balance. This is the real testament to all those people I mentioned, the testament to staff, budget advisory committee, and past commissions for the last six year. Because if you look at this, all we can think about, a lot of people just think about the past couple of years where we're going to really have to hit in reserves. But if you look at that chart there, there's where our reserve fund was in two thousand seven when we saw a problem coming. Eight million five hundred and forty-nine thousand. We saw the problem coming and we prepared for it, which is what built those reserves up to the, to the high point of ten million nine hundred and thirty-five. And even we continued until two thousand twelve, having it at ten five fifty-nine. But then after all those years of cutting, not putting capital in, not doing things, then what we're anticipating happens. And you see the usage of the reserve, which we knew was going to make the breaking point and come, has begun to. But in all these years and with the crash, if the projections are right, and again, we deal so much with projections in this thing. It could change from now till October first, we're all dealing with projections. But if the projection of what we're going to use from the unassigned fund is right this year, we will end this year up almost the exact same place where we started the crisis. So where, that's the good news, is we really haven't, from two thousand seven to two thousand fourteen, we haven't used the reserves to the point of making them lower. However, now we've hit that threshold. And as you can see, as we go further in this budget, this year, we're going to have to tap from the unassigned fund unless we look at cutting people, services, or something like that. And we've reached that point while we saved that money for it. And of course, we need to have a plan, collectively, we need to have a plan to deal with that. When we started this year's budget in May, when the first budget, everybody did their wish list, what they needed and stuff, that top number is, as you can imagine, where I fell out this year. That's what was the projected deficit that we would have in the budget that we'd have to go to unassigned or something for, almost two million dollars. Obviously, that had to change and we reduced and by several different ways. And one of the main avenues we can do it, and I think it's in B two of your budget book, I think it's B two, as you can see, utilization of the money to, of selling the nursing home property to do capital projects, many of which have been cut. And these department heads can tell you, some of these things you see on the list have been cut one, two, three, and even four years. And the buildings weren't getting any better shape, the cars weren't running any better, the facilities weren't operating. And without that money, you know, there's seven hundred more thousand we'd have to try to deal with. So with utilizing that money, we were liable to, when this first preliminary budget presentation came out a week ago, our projected from the, from the unassigned fund balance was about seven hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. But as you see the little caveat after there, that wasn't even figuring the salary increases. So obviously, again, when we reach that stage, we go back to the drawing board. Obviously, why do we continue to need to use the unassigned fund balance? It's, it's, it's two simple reasons. One, we have to maintain the high level of services to our citizens and visitors. And again, it's to account for the increased operating capital expenses. For instance, in this year that we're in now, you'll see there was a high amount of public safety overtime. And we've got an issue with the fire pension costs. And those are issues that really affect, whereas last year I projected, I really wanted to get in around four hundred thousand dollars from the reserve. While we're sitting at a number that's about six hundred and fifty thousand. Those are just two of the major examples of some things that happened that weren't expected. And again, the unassigned fund balance is what we, we had to use. Again, hitting the drawing board again, as we'll do every week, probably from now until the budget finished, and working with the budget advisory committee and working with staff. From the time you got this presentation preliminarily that went on the website and you got it about a week ago, this is what we've, we've done in a week. Obviously, the top number was where we were at. We found an additional capital cut of sixty thousand dollars. One of those projections that we didn't know came in this week on health insurance costs. And we think we're going to be able to save eighty-four thousand dollars in what we budgeted for health savings cost. And again, here's another thing, we projected, we didn't know. Obviously, this was good because this came to the good, so there's eighty-four thousand off. We found twenty thousand of additional budget cuts. I had to program in something because obviously, you need to see these figures with, with some type of raise. Everywhere around the county is going to somewhere between two and three percent raise. So I had to put something in here so you'd see some numbers. So just for the sake, and I don't have a salary proposal ready for you yet, but just to get a number in there for a two point two five average raise, that's the amount of money we needed. The last figure is the goal we'll need to set for ourselves that in the next budget year, we will need to expend the churn ninety-nine percent of our two thousand fifteen budget. If we accomplish that goal, that's additional two hundred and twenty thousand. So bottom line, right now that I bring to you tonight, before we go back to the drawing board tomorrow morning, that's the bottom figure is the amount that we estimate we will have to take from the reserve. Again, a lot of factors, maybe some revenues come in higher, that changes. Obviously, I, I've got to say that it could be some expenditures or a drop in revenue somewhere, and that number's going to fluctuate. But as we talk right now and before we go back to the drawing board tomorrow, that is where we at, we're at. So the next slide I want to show you is just the thinking process that we're doing. It's, it's just a process of thinking that we're looking at the future and what we need to do. Because somewhere along the line, we got to get to a point where the unassigned fund balance is not used. We have a balanced budget and then we can start thinking about, you know, dropping the millage rate. That's got to come somewhere. Unfortunately, I don't think it's going to come until the next three or five years. Hopefully, that'll change. Hopefully, we'll see double the jump we had this year. And all of these figures will, will go a different way if we see things happen. But just as a projection, this is just to show you a thinking process. You see what we used at the high point of unassigned fund balance, when we really started using one million three hundred and eighty-one thousand. Cut that this year and this year, September thirtieth, hopefully it'll be lower than that and not higher. But our estimate is that we're going to come in and use six hundred and fifty-one for the reserve. Obviously, this budget here for right now, looking at things, the goal is to bring it somewhere in that five hundred to six hundred thousand dollar range. Again, that's just the goal right now. Obviously, if we can go lower than a half a million, then, you know, I'd love to be able to do that. Projecting next year, two thousand sixteen, get more revenue, the property values go up. Hopefully, we're going to show the progressive drop until, under this scenario, we get to two thousand eighteen and there'll be no use of the unassigned fund balance or, and that we preserve, I think the point where we need to really put it down and say, okay, we've reached the point where we may have to make some drastic changes, some cuts, and we may need to cut back services if we ever get down and hit that seven million part of the reserve. The seven million will get us between, is, is two and a half to three million above the minimum we have to have. But again, you know, we've got to prepare for something else happen, maybe another downturn in the economy. So, so it's almost the point, and again, this is all thought processes. This is all something that'll be vetted through budget advisory, the commission continually over the next several years. You know, where are those numbers on the right need to change, when we need to get to that? And again, if we start booming, development starts happening. Just because we have things building right now, that doesn't mean they get on the tax rolls and we start getting the money. But, you know, the progressive of projects and, you know, neighborhoods and things coming in, it takes a couple of years. But hopefully, that'll increase so much, so all of those numbers are going to come down and maybe reach that goal two thousand seventeen, two thousand sixteen, where we meet that goal. But we have to have a thinking process to give you an idea of where we're going and at what point. If we do use that seven million, that will mean from two thousand seven, probably to two thousand seventeen, eighteen, a period of ten years, we've only dropped our reserves about a million and a half, and we've gone through one of the worst economic crises that the city's had. So again, that is just kind of looking at our thoughts out loud. That's a moving target, that's just right now thoughts. But I wanted to kind of give you what we're looking at now. And of course, we always, you know, want that to be better and hope things are, are coming in positive. Briefly, that's where we are as of right now. Again, we go back to work tomorrow and start working on those, the other slide that you see about looking for more cuts. Hopefully, getting new, some good news on projection, hopefully getting some good news on revenue, and hopefully not having to deal with bad news on revenue. But, you know, budget has always been a yearly priority, goes on every year. I mean, it might slow down in October a little bit. But again, as you can see, even with this budget, if we've got to come in ninety-nine percent of a slim budget, that's still a challenge for all of these departments out there who are working with less people, who, who, you know, will tell you their plights that they're trying to do, but they're surviving. And, and the citizens aren't seeing, you know, lack of service. Some things might take a little longer, but, you know, it's really a testament to them of where we have gotten. So again, before the next budget meeting, August seventh, hopefully there'll be some changes in some of these slides. Hopefully, there'll be some more money we found you or some more information to get you. When we go into the budget process, I think some things to look at really is, is that one page I told you of the capital. I think it was B two with those pages in there, because that really shows you some things we are trying to do and things that have been cut before. And these are, these are expenses from the nursing home. We, we kind of said when we were, when we were wrestling with, with selling the nursing home property. I can tell you, it was really a property I kind of wanted to keep. You know, I didn't really have an idea what it'd be in the future, but it was a nice place. But, you know, it got to the point where, for the obvious economic reasons of having a viable place like a nursing home that's a service to people in Tarpon, that the services are lacking now, to the jobs it's going to add, it's real positive. But besides that, it was able to have us put these capital things. Because those things you see in there weren't going to go away. If I didn't do them next year, the apartments were going to need them all. If you look at them, they're all things that won't go away. They'll need them in the two thousand fifteen budget, they'll need them in the two thousand sixteen budget. Or finally, the trucks, the buildings and stuff will just plain fall apart and we'll be forced to emergency fix them. And that money enabled us to do that without tapping the reserve. That's an important page. And I think the other important page, although it's in the second part that we're dealing with, because mostly we're dealing about general fund. And remember, a lot of things, when you're talking about personnel or everything, the enterprise funds, I think you can see in here in your budget, the enterprise funds are pretty much in good shape. So, you know, cutting people, cutting services in there doesn't affect these numbers because this is general fund money. So we've always got to be cognizant of dealing with general fund money. And that's always, you know, when you're wrestling, doing things or cuts, that's something you always have to deal with. But, you know, there'll be more capital items we'll need. And somehow, with all these figures, we'll have to try to fit some capital things in. Hopefully, if the revenues and, and the tax rate goes up, we can get to that point. So that's something to take a look at. Also, if you look at our CIP budget, our penny budget, we've got a lot of projects going on. We're going to be, we're going to be doing a lot of projects. And of course, when you look on to the next year with a new fire station and stuff, the next two years, we're going to be doing a lot of visible things that the community is going to see. And again, that money is from penny money, which is, again, why penny money is, is, is so important for us. If we ever lost penny money, I'd hate to be here for the ten years that we're bearing after that. Because when you look around this community, the parks and everything, you see that the pennies built, that's a visible place where the taxpayers can see where there are one cent along with the visitors, one cent everybody else has went to and stuff. So we are here, our departments are here for questions, Ms. Walker, myself. Chief Coach is on vacation. Chief Coach has been working very diligently on his budget. He is the one working on finding additional cuts. He's on vacation, but he'll be here for the budget meeting on the seventh, on August seventh, I believe it is, the second budget meeting. So we're here for your disposal.
One of the things is, and just a couple of, of questions that, you know, it doesn't have to be answered tonight, but that we can get some information. One is, we know that investment was a part of our revenues. And we took a double hit in terms of the investments, yield being low, plus property taxes going down. You know, just to see where we're at with investments now, how, how they're doing. Another thing is, is simply because we talked about tonight, the nursing home property and the sale of that. I know that we had established a, an account that we was going to put X number of dollars in it from those types of sales. I don't know whether collectively, we said how much we wanted to put in there yet, you know. I know over a certain amount, then we can make some determinations. So I, I don't know, that's something that I, I guess we would have to still.
The project maxed out at the hundred thousand maximum. It did get hit in that, that's why I said seven hundred thousand. You know, the nursing home was just over eight hundred. That's the other hundred went into that, into the land fund.
Yeah, and I have to look and, and some of you guys that are better memoryers can tell me, you know, that, I thought that was a mechanism in there that we could make some additional, a call in terms of how much we would go above that, so. But that's just something to look at, if somebody remembers that. I don't know if Jeffy remembers how it went.
Yes, that, you, you could choose to, instead of using, using that money for what's in the budget, you could put additional money into that fund. It just caps at a hundred and then it would be at the commission's discretion if any other money was to be put in there.
How, how much did you talk about putting into the budget there?
B, I think it's B, am I right, B two, Eric?
So that's a little over a hundred and thirty, that's still.
Well, the hundreds already, yeah, the hundreds already in that account.
That's kind of it, you know. But that's something that we could talk about. I don't, I don't know what the pleasure is as far as how y'all would like to go tonight, listen to the department heads or asking some questions that you'd like to have additional information about, but, you know.
Yes, thank you. And first off, I want to, want to, want to thank our staff. I know we asked you to do, you know, run a, a full-service city. And every budget year, from when I was on the advisory committee and on here, we asked you to, to do more with less. And I do appreciate that. And I know that your, your pay isn't exactly where it might be comparable to other, 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 other cities that we're trying to catch up. But I, I do recognize how hard it is for you all. The, 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 the reserves are something that I campaigned off of. They're very, they're very important to me because it is our savings account by charter. As we know, we have to keep, or not by charter, by state law, I think, we have to keep twenty percent of our budget in the reserves, which if you use this, this year's budget, if I'm correct, that's around four million four thirty-seven. So we're, we have about, you know, I guess you would say half or a little less of that, the left, that, that we can use. Mark, in your projections of, of future use of that fund, what factors did you play in? Did you just take like the increased tax revenue from this year and kind of just, you know, extrapolated that or?
Yes, I kind of, if everything went on the upturn pretty consistent. And again, you know, I think I've told many of you that this is the one process I like the least because I like dealing with firm answers. I don't like dealing with projections because projections are, but projecting the incremental will be the increments we're seeing. If that goes, and as you can see this year with the increase of about five percent in the property taxes, it got us somewhere around three hundred thousand dollars. So seeing that three hundred thousand dollars, you know, maybe increasing, again, the reason I like that last sheet as a think sheet is, it's going to adjust by what happens. If it goes up double, then of course, everything compresses. If something happens, it, so it's almost like an accordion, that, that final sheet, we got the accordion to see. You know, I'm not even sure the projection, we're going to come in six hundred and fifty at the end of this budget. How do we know again? So that was just conservative, conservative, just incremental, a, a method of, of having something on there and then watching how that changes.
And if, I assume if, if we had not had the sale of, of, of the nursing home, this six fifty-one for two thousand fourteen projected, it would be significantly higher.
Or you'd, or all the things you see done in the nursing home sales would have been cut again in the budget. As I said, many of them were cut two and three years. Are those things would, would either go away, or if we did them, they would come out, have to come out of the unassigned fund balance, which would be, you know.
Again, I think we need to do everything we can to, though, 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 to, to protect this fund. Bringing it down to seven million, I mean, if we have to do that, we'll do that to, to keep the city operating. But that leaves us very little room for any future crisis. And, you know, just have to behoove future boards to figure out ways to, I think, and I think the overall goal is going to have to be to bring in more revenue. I mean, we can't cut much more and maintain a full-service city. I mean, you can go into the budget and cut little things there and there. But, you know, all we hear from residents is, in the sense of that, you know, the time it takes to get, to get things done. You know, the city hall's already, you know, dealing with such a strapped personnel and strapped budget that I'm not sure what else we can cut that would make a, a big difference. So I think for this board, and that's when, that's where Ms. Lemmons comes in, very important, is to find ways of, of new revenue. So I think whenever we're looking at projects, working with developers, or thinking up ideas, that needs to be in our minds. Because right now, you know, we're still okay, we can use these funds. But like I've been saying since probably two thousand eleven, there's going to be a stop point to that. And, and if we don't prepare now for that stop point, we're going to be in a world of hurt. And we won't be a full-service city at that point. It just won't be, it, it, it just can't happen. So I do appreciate staff again, because I saw the capital outlay before those cuts. And I appreciate the sacrifices you all made to get us to where we are at now. I, I would like, Mark, I know I, I have told you this privately, to make sure that we, I would say, have this same exact presentation mid-budget. So we know, so it's not such a surprise, and I don't say that in a, in a negative way, when it comes to us that, you know, we're using this, this much of the fund. That, that would be very, very, very important to me. And I can see also, so again, like always, we're assuming we're not going to use one percent of the budget, which, how'd that work out this year? What was the number? I know last year we did the same thing where we wouldn't use one percent. Were we able to do that again this year?
Well, again, we're going to see it, we'll see September thirtieth, that's another thing.
Well, I mean, that's again.
I don't think this year we did well with it.
Okay.
And the main reason is we had some public safety overtime, fire department, because a lot of personnel being lost and police with the volume of major cases and things. Those, both their overtime budgets went way over, I think. And again, it was an, it was unusual situations and stuff. I think without that, we probably wouldn't have made that. But again, you're always worrying about during the year, some unusual circumstances coming in. And whereas the fire. Whereas the fire department, I think last year gave us a big chunk of money back, which helped us with a thing. Um, I think they hit their overtime budget in June. I think June, they expended it already.
Well, because, I mean, if we don't do that, if we have that same issue this year, which is very possible, I know our, you know, fire department and, and a police department are working as hard as they can, we're gonna be almost at 900,000 from the, from the reserves. And again, it's just, I like to be conservative i- in my projections, let me just make sure I don't have, um, and then again, this is assuming, is it, you said this is, this is assuming no salary increases, or the two?
No, it's in the fi-- that's in your new document.
In the final one, okay. All right, good, good. And that's just, and once they salary increase, that's just cost of living. That's, that's not really, they're, 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 they're not, the public shouldn't think they're getting a bonus. That, that, that's probably not even cost of living, usually cost of living's about 3%.
The number I gave you in the draft presentation, again, and I, it's a draft, but again, this is always a moving process. So, you're right, I think one thing that we need to do better, and it came out of talking with you, is, you know, not just start this process, not on the budget, give a regular update of where we think the, once we get those first four-month projections, which is sometimes in five or five and a half, because they always come in a month or a month and a half later, sit there and show you from these documents where we're looking at. We're looking good, we're looking, all of a sudden, revenues from some of these projects that have been built, they've hit. So, all of a sudden, we're only thinking of this, um, you know, Ann Clokey got built, the homes got sold, and all of a sudden, this revenue's coming in to give you the ups. And then, something crashes or something happens, or we lose, you know, we lose the communication tax from the state or something happens, hey, commission, we just lost $400,000 in tax money.
And that's a real possibility, isn't it?
Yeah.
Exactly, with Tallahassee.
And to keep you in that process of, uh, I say updates of where we are during the process of keeping with this, with this vision we have and where we know we're gonna start teetering on the point of, of, you know, trying to balance this thing out. And of course, the goal is the two things. First of all, it's very hard to drop the milage rate, you know, when we're taking from the reserve. So, our first step is to get to the, is to stop using the reserves. And then, the immediate step after that, if we can sustain, then drop that milage rate so we have...
I would agree with that. I mean, dropping the reserves now would just be for political matters, and that's not, that's by any measure of accounting, um, that's not, that's not the right, the right, the right, the right thing to do. We need to stop the bleeding, which is using the reserves, and then lower the, lower the, lower the, uh, uh, the, the rate. Though I do tell people that, you know, it's hard to compare us with other cities, if you get technical, because we are a full-service city. So, that's what we need, we need to be compared to with that rate. Uh, just a matter of, just a thing in public, the, uh, the truck for the fire department's in the penny money, correct?
Yes.
So, the boat we got them last year, which I've heard was, is, it was great, they've already used it, um, well, they're gonna, they're gonna be getting a proper truck to, uh, to, to tow that boat with. Is it gonna be like?
Yes, October fir-, October 1st, and then that's in the penny money.
Okay, excellent.
October 1st, or the first three weeks, whenever those, that, that'll be, that'll be able to be purchased.
How did, um, Live Oak affect any enterprise funds or any, anything like that as far as that million-dollar-plus project?
Well, that'll come in probably when we do the water and sewer, when we do the next water and sewer study. Not necessarily that it'll do anything, it'll do something, but again, what it'll do is, we'll have to make the decision if we're gonna continue to do new proj-- I mean, we could stop and that happened, so we need to go a couple of years and not do some projects. We wouldn't have to raise it. But, of course, I'm gonna recommend to you, we need to be, because we can't stop there with the different water and sewer projects we got. Um, you know, Bay Shore Heights going, we have the potential in the next three, four years to do, provide sewer out on Bay Shore. Um, obviously, if we stop because of what happened on Live Oak and don't raise it up a little bit to account for that, you know, we got a choice. We're either gonna continue doing sewer projects, or we may have to stop for a few years while we make up the money for Live Oak. So, that'll be a decision we'll have of, of, do we continue, or do we hold off to make up for there in Live Oak? And that's a decision, when we do the study for that, that, that this commission, that'll be the challenge for this commission to address and see which way they wanna go.
Well, I do appreciate all this and the work of, of everyone. I just, you know, again, everything we can to guard, to guard this fund, because it's not a slush fund. It, it does, it does have a stopping point. And if we get down to that stopping point, then we essentially have no savings, in case, uh, in case a disaster happens. And going back to what I said, I think everything, not everything we do as a board, but one, one of our main goals as a board is should be to find new sources of revenue that we can bring in. Because I, I don't, you can only, you can only cut yourself so much, and I think we're kinda, we're kinda, we're kinda cut to the max. And I would like it just official that, that, that we do get this kind of an update, um, midway through budget year. So, we, we, we can, I know, I know we get the financial documents, but to have this kind of a, a presentation's helpful. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, first, I'd also like to, uh, thank the city manager and, and staff for all the work they have done, uh, not just on this budget, but over the last several years through some of the lean times that we've had. And I'd also like to say thank you, uh, to the members of the budget advisory board, uh, for the work that they do. Uh, I, I presume at some point this evening, we'll give them an opportunity to speak if they wish to do so. Um, I found the last page of the presentation, kinda like Commissioner Banther, to be probably the most interesting page. Uh, one question I wanted, and I think Commissioner Banther was kind of asking this, and I, I just wanna make sure I understand this as well. When, when you look at the projections there, does that include, uh, potential, uh, additional revenue from things like the gun range and, um, uh, Bay Shore Heights and, uh, some of the other projects that are coming?
On a real conservative basis, if they all come in and the homes get built and they get into tax rolls faster, this will be, this will be better. High, I mean, higher, not higher, but it'll be less and better for us that come in. This is just real conservative, it's almost Ari Walker thinking, she's, you know, Ari's always, everything is, I do it in staff, and she's real, so she doesn't give me anything. Come on, can't you say this, revenues going this? She goes, it, it, it's real conservative, um, almost not really worst-case scenario, because obviously something could happen, it could go worse than this, but I didn't wanna overly project. I am hoping to move this up a year, and I'd be ecstatic if it go up two years to where we reach that point. Um, and again, if all the homes get built, if the gun range and other things get built, the thing is, they're in process and they're starting to build, Ann Clokey, if you look, they're starting to go in, but those homes aren't built, someone's not in them, and they're not paying the taxes, so we start seeing this.
Sure.
When is that? One year, two years, three years? Um, that's why I'm thinking, if the development goes like it's gonna, it's continue, it's gonna start to boom somewhere in there, and then we're gonna get that burst of money that we can get to the point where we're balanced the reserve and get to the point of looking at that milage rate and say, okay, now we can lower it, because now all these places that pays are coming in, they're paying the taxes, the revenue's coming in. So, this is real conservative. Now, again, on the other side, you still go to these conferences and, you know, I'm sure we'll hear at the League of Cities, uh, mayor in August, some of these people saying that, be careful, because in a year or two, we could have another dip. Um, again, that's just, be careful, because it could happen. Hopefully, it won't. So, we also have to realize these numbers could get worse. Um, but again, we're hoping it's not, and with what we're seeing in, you know, development and places coming in here and some, some projects that should bring us some good revenue, again, I hope these numbers get better as we get to next year, and you see these projections that they start improving as opposed to staying the same or, or getting worse, so...
Sure.
But again, it's all projection, but this is a very conservative, um, this is a very conservative, uh, projection.
Okay. Um, I know some years we've gone like page by page, and, and, you know, if anyone wants to do that, we can. I, I wasn't going to this evening, but I did have a couple of questions, uh, particularly related to the revenue side. Um, one question I had, I know recently we, uh, entered into a new franchise agreement with Clearwater Gas, which, uh, the good news is, it had a higher franchise fee. Uh, I believe the increase was from 5% to 6%. I'm wondering, and I think it would probably be on page one of the revenues, I'm wondering if, uh, that increased revenue is reflected in the budget.
That was not taken into consideration. This year, because we didn't have a cold winter, um, the revenue is down from where it's been in the past, um, at this point in time. So, I didn't wanna add anything to it.
Okay. Um, another question I had, again, on the revenue side, I noticed, this is on page three, I noticed the library, um, library is listed twice, it's on page two, it says library fees on page two, and then on page three, it just says library, and the revenue projection increases from, uh, 21,000 to 35,000, which, that, that sounds good to me. Uh, but I, I was wondering, uh, what, what that was based on.
The fees are the money that, um, people pay when they don't return their books on time?
Yeah, that one only went up 1,500.
Right.
That, that was on page two, but on page three, it just says library, and the revenue increased by a pretty significant amount, from 21,000 to 35,000.
Those are donations, the library donations, um...
So, we're simply anticipating a larger amount of donations?
Yes, um, Carrie Repagolos.
Carrie, Carrie, you wanna address that, or? See, Carrie, you're the first one that gets to come up. Poor Carrie, she feels left out, usually in the bus, she's the last or down the line, so you're first this time.
Well, this is based on information I received from our friends at the library. Um, their investments have been doing better, and the last few years, um, they have been able to give us more than they had. And, um, I went to the board and the treasurer, and this is the number they suggested I go with, so...
That's, that's fantastic.
Yeah.
Thank you. Very good. Uh, and then along those same lines, I believe also on page three, as well as on page two, there's a number of recreation-related, um, revenue increases. On page three, there's one that doubles, it just says recreation, it goes from 5,100 to 10,000. And then on page two, there's a number of recreation things, including camps, uh, increasing from 42,000 to 60,000, which again, that, that sounds good to me. Uh, I was just wondering if that's, you know, based on something in particular, like where, where we're coming up with those good news increases?
Those were provided, um, by the, um, superintendent of the information department?
Also, the resident activity card went up a significant amount.
Um, with the camps, this year, we increased the price of the camp, and we extended actually two weeks. So, our revenue this year is projected to go up 5,000. So, we're looking to increase the number of campers we can allow next year, which will hopefully generate the extra 15,000 revenue.
Plus, talk about what you're doing with the, the thing we're changing about, bringing people in, for instance, if they're gone half the summer and coming in. This is a provision that he, that he's put in that'll also increase that.
So, this year, um, most camps do, you buy the whole summer or you don't come. So, we actually did an à la carte option this year, where if they chose weeks by end, total of the camp for the 10 weeks was $600, so $60 a week. But if they pick and chose a week, we actually charge them 75 if they had an activity card, or 85 if they didn't. So, we're actually trying to get more people to get activity cards, we get to track them better. Um, that's where the activity card fees go up. You see the revenue there is because currently, there's no difference if you have an activity card or you don't, you're paying a 3% up charge. Um, I think by being residents of Tarpon and getting an activity card, you should get a benefit. So, people who don't wanna become members of the rec department, I think they should pay a higher fee, because you're still getting our great services. So, that's where hopefully the increase in revenue by more people getting activity cards.
I think that, uh, $600 is a bargain for, I, I know all the different things the camps do and where, where they go, and that's the, the field trip type things that they do and so forth. I think that's quite a good deal.
The best part, we were actually able to offer three free field trips. So, our last one is tomorrow, we're taking all the camp to the Rays game.
Neat.
So, that's our...
Yeah.
Yeah, we took them to Legoland, uh, Rays game, and to a Dunedin Blue Jays game this year. So, we were able to offset the cost on all that, just by raising it $10 a week.
Very good, thank you.
And again, something Craig reminded me from my days when I had kids in camp. Obviously, again, as I was saying, some summers, obviously, you know, you're gone for four, four weeks or a long period of time. So, if you're a parent and you're going, that much time, well, we're gonna pay a whole amount for a camp, and then we're gonna miss half of it, and they just don't sign them up for camp at all. This way, um, you don't lose that revenue, because go ahead and go your four or five weeks, yes, you're gonna pay $15, but, you know, you're gonna save the, you're gonna save that four weeks, and you're still gonna get your camp. So, you know, as soon as he hit that idea, it remembered from my old days of doing it, wow, that is, right? Because a lot of parents just wouldn't put the kid, why aren't you in camp this year? You'd ask them, well, we're gonna be gone too much, and we won't get the value for our money. This way, they can get value for their money, we get the revenue, and the kids get the advantage of, uh, you know, something to keep them off the streets this summer and some good activities and stuff. So, it's a win-win all the way around. I wanna thank Craig for reminding me of that in our younger days by coming up with that idea.
Very good. Uh, I, I know in the, uh, presentation, there was a proposed salary increase or cost of living increase of 2.25% average. Uh, I'd be interested in getting some additional information, uh, maybe, you know, a number of different options of what we could do and what the, what the ramifications would be of the...
That's one of the drawing board things tomorrow that we're gonna start, where we need to see where we were. I could even give you a number. That number's just a number. What, what that is was a number, and we said, all right, what does that 270 mean? And it's an average of 2.25. So, that was just a number to kinda show you where we are.
Sure.
Now, how do we structure that into the actual raises and the personnel and with salaries? That's one of the things we're gonna talk on tomorrow and hopefully have ready for you, or an idea where we're going by the second budget meeting, August 7th.
And I presume the budget advisory board will be involved in those discussions as well. Thank you.
Mr. Tarpon?
Thank you. I also wanna briefly thank everybody for all your hard work. I feel like, uh, Mark, over the last two months, um, several times I've called the office, probably three or four times a week, and got the message from Ms. Hickey that, uh, you're in a budget meeting, so I know you've been working hard on it. So, I appreciate that. Um, I, I feel like this first meeting with the budget is always prudent for the commission to kinda look at the presentation and ask for things for the next meeting, and things that would be helpful, or tools, or graphs. Um, so I'll start with that. Um, one of the things that I think would be helpful as we look at the unassigned fund balance, because that's always a, a pretty hot topic, um, I think it would be helpful for the public and also for the commission to see, over the last five years, how much we've actually used per year, um, because we've been balancing the budget for about five years. Uh, I mean, not, not balance, balancing it with the unassigned fund. Um, so I think it would be interesting, as well as helpful, to see, hopefully, over the last five years, that number has kind of continued to come down. It may have gone up a couple of times in the middle, um, but I think it'd be interesting to see that as you can add this to your presentation, uh, that you gave tonight, Mr. La Courice. Um, the, the, uh, in the presentation, it was mentioned the vacant job positions. Um, that's also something I'm not, you know, not asking for tonight, but if you could give us that number, um, of the vacant jobs positions, what, how many are projected to be filled, um, and also in total, what those, the, the total number of, uh, dollars would be attributed to those salaries? Um, and also, like I said, how many of those are gonna be filled? Um, back to the unassigned fund balance, uh, Ms. Walker, if you could, not tonight, but at our, at our next meeting, give a little bit of an, of an explanation in terms of how the, where the revenues come from for that budget, or for that fund, um, how the city funds it, where the money comes from, uh, to actually contribute money to that fund, I think is prudent. Um, I'm a little bit confused on the, I could be missing a page in my budget, but as far as the money from the nursing home property, um, you said that's on B, B2, correct?
B2, yes.
That's, that's where the capital would be used.
Yeah, that's where the capital's used. So, so I see, uh, let me just go here. Okay, so it starts, uh, B2, buildings and grounds, correct?
Um, no, under, under the nursing home sales proceed, which... No, under the nursing home sales proceed, which, just not that little top part, but starting with nursing home proceeds, those were capital items that got put into there.
Okay, so it starts with nursing home sale proceeds, and then it goes Buildings and Grounds and list that, right?
Yes.
Okay, and then it goes, carries over to the next page?
Yes.
And it goes down to Recreation and then it stops, right?
No, Parks and Parkway, Roads and Streets, and then it stops. Where, that's where you see, before you get to the Perpetual Care Fund, just above that, you see General Fund Cash Carryover Proceeds.
288-700, right? 288-700 is what it says. Do I have a bad page?
There was the updated insert we got, if that's.
Oh, you got the bad page?
Okay, I have a bad page then. Okay, so that's where I'm confused then. I can come back to that or get that tomorrow from Chris or something.
671-300.
Yeah, I understand it's 671, I show 288, that's where my disconnect was. But I can get that new page from Chris tomorrow. Do you have it too, Jeff? Yeah, so I'm just, you know, that's quite a difference from the 671 to the 288. So I'm just curious, as we move forward, you know, what those other improvements are.
Do you see somewhere in that book where they got added or, because I thought they all?
We got like little, we got a thing or something.
Thought they all got to you.
My iPad tells me the correct number, but my book too says 288, so.
The iPad is always right. Always. So maybe we could get that page sent to us tomorrow, just so we can all be on the same page.
I got to get it sent to all of you and I don't know where the mix-up of the inserts was. They're supposed to all be gotten for you to take these pages out and to insert the new pages, so.
So that's something that we can work on.
Yes.
But while we are looking at that page, under the, and just looking for some clarification here, it says new IT generator, natural gas, City Hall replacement generator. I thought, and I could be wrong, but I thought we just replaced the generator in City Hall. Did we not just buy a new generator?
No, not yet.
No?
It was budgeted and then didn't get installed.
You saw it in the budget that didn't get?
Couple of years ago or something?
Yeah, it did not get installed.
Okay. So that money that was budgeted then carried over for whatever that budget year was?
It had to be rebudgeted because they didn't spend it by the end of the year.
Uh huh, but we in fact budgeted for it for that year? But it just wasn't spent?
Correct.
Okay.
Would you like to look at this?
You know what, I'll look, nobody else has it, so we'll just, I can come back to it at our August 7th meeting.
Okay.
So Commissioner Banther kind of touched on the fact that if you take the nursing home proceeds, which is like, or that we're using, which is like 671, and then you take what you're projecting, we're really at like a million four that we're balancing the budget with, with the unassigned fund balance, right? Okay, so that's, you know, I mean, that's a certain way to look at it. And the only reason I say that, my deal with the budget and it always has been, is that this community be competitive with the surrounding communities. And 100%, you do have to take into consideration that we are absolutely a full-service community where some of the other communities are not. So, but as we look to grow, I'm convinced that and always have been that that's one of the things that people look for when they move to a town, all the way up to, you know, industry. And they're looking for that, okay? And we're fortunate because we have good schools and we have a nursing, or we have a hospital and we have everything that people look for. But it's just important to me that we stay competitive with the surrounding communities. The, and I know we're not there yet, but I'll just mention something. When it comes to the capital improvement projects and the penny money, are we going to talk about that later?
It's on the agenda, time is on the for, the ability to discuss it if we want to discuss those today.
Is that something we're going to go to in a little while, Mr. Mayor?
It, you know, this is one that, that's the pleasure of the board we can, you know.
Okay.
At least try to get the, enough information out there in terms of seeking some answers that we can at the next meeting, you know, to deal with.
That'll work. I know it's, you don't have the crystal ball to talk about the projects that we have ongoing. But I think since it was mission, or mentioned by the vice mayor and also Commissioner Banther, some of the projects that we have going on, I think if we just use the simple formulas in terms of the Tarpon Key project, right? We know there's going to be 62 homes there. And there's tons of information available on their website as far as what those homes are going to sell for. So just to play the devil's advocate, to give us an idea as we look to the future years, say it takes two years for that to get built out. If all of those homes are averaged at $330,000 and there are 62 homes, could we not use maybe a simple formula to give us an idea of what that potential development's going to contribute? And the same with the one on the lake, I don't know what they're calling that, over by you, or vice mayor?
Yeah, Keystone?
Yeah, I think that's what, like 55 lots? So again, if we use, you know, that times 300,000, whatever the formula is, it'll give us a little bit of an idea. You know, the gun range, we don't know what that's going to be assessed at because it's not on an individual thing. So if we could do a little bit of projecting, I think that would be helpful. And I'll save my capital improvements comments for later on the agenda, thank you.
Thank you, I also want to thank all the department heads for a great job on the budget and how hard you guys all work. Many of my questions have been answered, but I agree with Mr. Banther as well that development and growth is important and we need to look at how to bring in more revenue, facilitate revenue and new business and also try to keep, you know, our businesses here because that's just as important. And I wanted to say thank you, Craig, I think it's a great job and great ideas that you have with the à la carte camps and that our residents are getting a break and the way you're running it, thank you. I don't have any other questions right now, thanks.
Just for clarification, I think that Commissioner Tarpani, you asked about the fund balance and an assumption of what caused that to increase? Was that one of your questions that was getting information back was the unassigned balance?
Yeah, so my, with the unassigned fund balance, one question was, or one comment was, I'd like to see a list over the last five years of how much money we've drawn from that? So 2010 to present. And then the other comment that I had in relation to that was, you see there, I don't have the dates in front of me, but you see there sometime in the last five years that even though we drew from the unassigned fund balance, the fund increased. So an explanation in terms of how that happened and also how we fund that particular fund.
Okay, I just want clarification because, you know, I had that down of what made it increase. But you know, just to make sure that we get that information, because you're right. One of the things is, is that some of the years, even though we dropped the millage rate and we brought in less revenue, the fund balance still was able to increase. We raised the millage rate some, but revenue still went down, the fund balance still was going up. And I know that there were some things you talked about, forced freezing and rust that. And I know some of it was going to be a general assumption of what happened, but those things I think would be somewhat helpful. The other thing is, I think that we have to at least consider, I know that we look at the fund balances that, you know, somewhat sacred cow, but we talk about Ms. Lemon and we wanted to do some things. And at some point in time, we have to look in terms of what she has to work with. And I'm thinking that, you know, at least consider that there's some type of loan to that CRA so that we can do some additional things that would help with the continuous progress as far as what's been happening in the downtown area. But not only that, we have some other areas in town that some of the buildings now are maybe either vacant or starting to deteriorate. What can we do as far as those are concerned to continue to generate economic development? And I could say, you know, we want her to continue to do a great job, but sometimes it's a little hard to do the work when you don't have the tools. So, you know, I'd like for at least to look at considering, I'd like to hear from her at some point in time, what she thinks that might be helpful as we continue, you know, that process of economic development. Is there something that you want to talk about for is the enterprise funds? Anyone?
I just, my question with Mark was just about Live Oak and just, I know he may not, if you want to have, if there will be any more information on that in August, maybe give some projections of what could happen because that, again, was a million plus if I'm not mistaken.
When do we do, when are we scheduled to do the water and sewer impact? When are we set to do that study area?
You mean the one from the consultant?
The one for seeing if we need to?
At this point, he's? At this point, the consultant said they did not see that we needed to do a rate increase.
Okay.
With the information he has at this time.
And that included the Live Oak emergency?
Yes.
Okay.
What it's doing though is pushing out some sewer expansion to future years.
That's where I said we may need to talk about.
Correct.
Yes, while we don't have to, if we want to push those things back, there could be some thoughts. And again, I say, we may have another opportunity with a new development coming in to even expand it more. And again, that's an area when you're talking about Bay Shore, hits all the criteria, it's on the water, near the water, almost like the Lake Tarpon project. But obviously, that is, that wasn't even figured because until Bay Shore Heights came along, there was no opportunity to have the infrastructure lift nation even do that with. So it was a pipe dream then, but if Bay Shore Heights goes through, then it could be a reality, add to the list. And then we'll just have to see if we want to add those and keep those projects going. Do we want the associated rate increase to do that? And then that's a question for next year that this board will have to wrestle with and see which way they want to go.
And sorry, but just to add to what the mayor said, I'm in full agreement that we need to make sure that Ms. Lemmons has all the tools that we can financially afford to give her at her disposal. You know, I'm not sure if we can find some way to stretch more marketing dollars to her or, you know, new ideas downtown of what can be done. And the one thing I do plan to bring up after we get through the budget workshops, I think this would tie into her department, I've already talked to IT. It is a new city website because I think there's, that's just, not even a debate that it's dated. And while it's information-rich, you know, people are looking at that website to come here, do what? It just, it doesn't look like it's in something past 2001. So I, though I, so I agree with the mayor, we need to make sure that she has those tools to promote the city, I think that's one of them because we're not going to cut our way out of this problem, it's going to be new revenue, thank you.
Anything else as far as enterprise fund?
I'm not sure if it's an enterprise fund, so. The CRA is an enterprise fund, correct?
No, it's a special, it's a special district.
Uh huh, so it's not, it's not in?
No, it's formed a special district as part of the city.
Right, I know that.
It's, but it has its own fund.
Okay. My question, I guess I'll go ahead and ask it, is where do we stand with the facade grant program?
There's only about $37,000 left of the money that was originally approved by the CRA board, which is the commission. It was $150,000 initially and.
The reason I mention that is one of the things that we talked about with the whole sponge stock discussion was when we scrapped the proposed project, we discussed a lot of different options. And one of the things that was tossed around publicly and privately was doing a facade grant program for an area to be determined down there. And I think once we hired Ms. Lemmons, the, for a while, the facade grant program was a little stagnant. But I think once we hired her is when we really started to see the benefit and people taking advantage of that program. So at some point in our discussion of this budget, I'd like to discuss the facade grant program and potentially adding some additional dollars to that program and offering that to an area to be defined by this board for the sponge stocks.
Okay, the sponge stocks are not included in the CRA?
Okay, so, yeah, so we can make a new, so instead of being funded from the CRA, it's funded from a different source?
Well, what it would be is, again, when we're talking about the numbers with the general fund, unassigned, it's in there. So it would be, it would be in addition, say you want to put 50,000 in. So as we're doing the pluses and the minuses, you would add 50,000 to the unassigned fund balance. It would be, it would be one of the pluses or if it's cut some, something's cut somewhere else, that would be in addition to what we're looking at.
Is that something that we could have on our next budget agenda to discuss? Because now's the appropriate time to do that, correct?
Right.
Okay, I mean, it's at the leisure of the board, but that's something that we discussed.
I mean, anything you can add, but just remember, that's why it's good to keep this thing as a moving document because you just need to, if it's 50,000, then when you hit that deficit, then add 50,000 to that unassigned fund balance and that's where those go. So that's just one of those pluses and minuses. Who knows, we might get a windfall and some other payment come in, 50,000 less. So you might say, well, let's keep this the same, let's take that 50,000 from insurance and offset it with a facade thing, something like that. So, you know, either way you can do, but that's where you have the pluses and minuses of those figures I gave you. But obviously, you know, you can add or subtract anything you want, you just, you just change the figures, so. But that would be in the general fund budget to deal with. If it was a starter program, 50, whatever the number is, then that would be there.
And the summer jobs program was also, is also in the general fund?
Yes.
And we still have that funded?
Yes.
And did we increase that funding at all?
No, but that, with the success of it, you know, I'm hoping to maybe find 5,000 to increase that way to get it to 15.
There you go.
That sound good?
That sounds good.
Because I think the success of it maybe want to find?
Absolutely.
Maybe want to find 5,000 to not add to this, but 5,000 of a cut to maybe add to that just as, as you see every week the success of it.
Sure.
I think, you know.
I mean, with 5,000, that's another five kids who can add it to their resume and benefit from it.
So, yes, that is a thought process as you're going in this thought process to $5,000 saving instead of putting to drop that maybe to bring to you again, Ted, I'm glad you brought that up because that's one of the things I'm gonna say here is, you know, obviously, I'm not going to add, want to add much to this because I'm trying to get it down.
Sure.
But that was one area, you know, especially when we made that presentation. And again, you see every week the students there, that's one, geez, I'd like to get a couple more in for next time. So, so, you know, I think we'll find that from somewhere and I just don't add it to this column and sticking in there with commission approval, of course.
Look forward to that.
Well, one of the things is, and I was looking, I don't see her, I don't guess Ms. Lemon is there?
She's right there.
Where'd she go?
She's behind the podium.
Oh, you can move now and she was going to help me in case mom technically challenges you. Move so they can see you, so.
I know, you know, they were calling you one time, superwoman, I know you have to maybe try to hide, but. One of the things is, and it doesn't have to be tonight, you know, we're talking about expansion of the facade grant into another area. Is to try to use the expertise that you have gotten about what might maybe is working in the CRA, maybe some ways that we need to tweak it in terms of trying to make it operate better, not just for the sponge stock area, which is, but even for the CRA, but at some future meeting. As well as what we talked about is, you know, I know that in an ideal world, you would like to have more money to be able to do some additional things as to, if that was to happen, you know, what are some of the things that you would like to do as we're looking at trying to empower you to bring in all of this revenue for us, you know? We'd like to try to, at least I believe, give you some tools to work with as we move forward. But like I said, not tonight and that type of thing there, but at some future meeting, you can bring that along with what Commissioner Tarpani had asked for as far as expansion of that program. You know, is there something we maybe could do a little better, different to generate some additional support and involvement?
Yeah, and I do got that on the list to bring back August 7th.
Yeah, I'm prepared because I have a list of things that I've, over the past two years since I've been here, I've kind of listened, watched, you know, rather than coming in and saying what I think should be, seeing how everything is working. And there's, there's some programs that I think can really benefit the CRA area, so I'm prepared for that. And also regarding Commissioner Tarpani, he was talking about the projections for upcoming projects. I actually have that, if you'd like me to go through that because we were keeping track of all of our subdivision and commercial projects. We have 14 subdivision projects that are in various stages of completion from being permitted to still being speculative, but that's quite a few. It includes, one, two, three, four, six that were previously started and then stalled during the downturn and now we're coming back online again. One's a new one, Windrush, that hasn't come before you yet but will be. And then there are, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, there are eight that are brand new that include Santo Siles, which is coming online this year, but also a few new ones, Lexington Reserve, Jasmine Town Homes, Keystone Ridge, Tarpon Key, quite a few. Taking them up, and I took a figure of 250,000, I'm trying to be conservative as well. But looking at the number of units in each of those subdivision projects, is 673 new units. And using the average of 250,000 a unit and using our millage, it's about $900,000 in yearly property tax revenues. So if all of these projects were completed, that would be the amount of new revenue coming to the city. And then the commercial projects, looking at reload. And then the commercial projects, looking at Reload, the Dunkin' Donuts on US-19, the Levy Plaza, that's the, called it the House of Cards Plaza, that's where Jimmy John's is in now, Racetrack, which is a new gas station market coming, that'll be coming before you on Klosterman and US-19. And then we have a, a potential manufacturing facility expansion. So all of those, I just, I have figures on a few of them. The Reload alone could be about 55,000 in property tax revenues to the city, but again, that won't be completed until the first quarter of 2015, so that won't come on board for another year. So as you, as you all said, when these projects start to come online, it takes a year or two for us to get the revenue, but that's good news. We've got some significant projects that are in the works. If they all get permitted and all get completed, we've got some good revenue coming in.
Well, thank you, and we know that the Lowe's project will be coming online.
Yeah.
Every, every other week, somebody is telling me that, you know, that it's, it's a goal, so we just trust that next year, at least, not the end of this year, that it'll be online too, you know?
Exactly.
But thank you for that. If nothing else for enterprise, we'll look at CIP discussion, say you had some things that you wanted to talk about.
Yeah, and it's just, brief mayor, and I saw somewhere in the budget for the capital improvement project that we have a million six planned for City Hall. Is that correct, Mr. Corrigan?
Yes.
But it says exterior. Is that just, is that inclusive of the interior innovations as well? Because I know that that's just exterior.
That's all the repointing, the window replacements, that's the entire building and facade.
Yeah. And the reason I mention it is because, first of all, the million six caught me a little off guard for just exterior improvements. I know year one on the Budget Advisory Committee, we had like $250,000 for, for repointing, and that was, you know, that was like five years ago.
Totally realistic.
Yeah, we recommended to the board that, at that time, you not do it because it was like, you know, the end of the world, 2008, so why would we repoint City Hall when the world's going to end anyways? But, so it stuck out to me as a million six for the exterior improvements, and I would just ask that, because it is a price tag of that, again, coming back at the, the future meeting for August 7th, if you could just give the board a better idea of what that money is going to be.
Yeah, and Tom Funk, so he's on vacation for this first meeting.
Yeah, no problem.
Yes, he'll be, that'll be one of the things.
You know, you see a million six, you wonder, well, what are we going to get for a million six? And the public wonders as well, so if you could just give us some insight into that, that would be appreciated.
Well, not to be surprised, wondering more, because there's also another 600,000 for that too, so we're, we're close to just over 2 million for the project, so we'll bring.
And we have.
I just don't want to surprise you and say, where'd you throw in that other amount of money?
And we have money coming for the performing arts too, right? I mean, on a side note, that's grant funding.
Yeah, and that's no match, so that doesn't affect our bottom line there because we, the obvious, the improvements in here will be unmatchable funds, so that's what, best kind of funds you can get where you don't have to match them and you, you know, we finally get our share of the state money to do something with one of our buildings that we see all over the place, so.
Absolutely.
Kathy's ecstatic about it.
Well, hopefully with that, that five, we look and see, you know, what can we do during the same time that might enhance, you know, not only what we got in here, but, you know, some of the other things that relates to this building here, so. That was it?
That was it.
Anything someone else has there?
I just, the fire, the truck for the fire department was my only question, and that was answered.
You see a, one, two, three, four, five, I think it's the sixth fire department thing where you see fire.
Yeah, I saw it. Yeah, perfect, thank you.
I, I see a few of the budgets.
Excuse me, I did have something else there.
Okay.
Just clarification on the transportation impact fund. I don't see a page number, otherwise I'd cite it, but I see the, the impact fees is $8,000, and to me, that just seems, that just seems low in comparison to the other impact fees.
What, there is a change being planned at the county level? And there's a note at the bottom that I spoke with Rodney Chapman back in March, and he said the county wants to replace the transportation impact fee with a mobility fee. He said that it was six to nine months before the county would probably have that put into place. The mobility fee will operate in a similar fashion to the transportation impact fee. The transportation impact fee is going away. This is a replacement. We have a multimodal transportation district and we will get 100% of whatever money is received from redevelopment or new development within those boundaries, and anything in the city outside of those boundaries will be split in a similar fashion that they do the transportation impact fees now. So that was only based on one quarter of a year.
Gotcha. So this is based on the first quarter of our fiscal year, 8,000?
Yes, yes.
And you're projecting it's going to be replaced with something that we're?
It's a, a.
Mobility.
Mobility fee.
Sure, understand. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Just one thing I'd like to note when you're looking at the page for the penny money, and you'll see, for example, I'll use the community center as an advantage, you'll see some, you know, you'll see money in here for, for different things, for the community center improvements, you'll see the $132,000, say, well, wait a second, I see some things in the, in that nursing home money from capital, what is the double thing? The money in there is, is money for things that the penny will not allow. So that's why you see it at two places. And, you know, the community center improvements, I think we talked about it last year, I think Commissioner Lard, I mean, we talked about, it was getting time and you kind of told me I'd cut it enough and we, I needed to do something, so. But where, where we're able to be helped with the nursing home money, where that balances is, again, there, there's expenditures that are not allowed, furniture, the weight room equipment, that is not allowed to come out of that. So whereas you see the money for buildings improvements in two places, it's what the penny money allows here, and then the supplemental money from the nursing home money to complete the project as one. So it's not double, you don't have it seen double places if you see those kind of things, it's just that that's where the rest of the money is. For instance, for the recreation, for the van, and I can tell you, I drove many years ago their van, to supplement the cops and kids van when we had 20 or so kids going, we took two vans, that van was ready to go about five years ago and been cut, so that's one thing you see in that nursing home money that's essential, and for someone who drove it four years ago and was ready to do it, that's another thing where the nursing home money helped with, you know, again, being able to transport kids to events and stuff or not having to pay the astronomical prices to an Astro's Gate or somewhere to transport on bus when you use a couple vans to take them, that's a money saver too. So that's where you get, again, when you go back and I get you the, the figures you should have had in this budget about the nursing home money, if you look at each and every item, whether it's something to do, a roller to the roads, I mean, you know, we've got a machine ready to fall apart if we want to do road improvements, projects for, we're going to have to have that roller, and it's not going to go away, it'll be there next year. Nursing home money allows us to get that, and those machines, that 10, 15, you know, or more years, as you see our things replacing, you don't have to worry about it in here for all that time. It's bought, it's done, and, and we can do it, the building improvements, hopefully they'll last for a long period of time, and you'll never see anything on this column of the presentation from general fund budget to be additional because we've done it here. They're not things that, you know, okay, we funded this year from the nursing home money, but it's a reoccurring cost next year, so it really didn't help us. We tried to do, again, buildings, grounds, our materials, machinery, trucks we needed for our improvement of grounds, and tried to take that money on everything we looked in there for as a qualification. So when you get that sheet and look at it, that's the philosophy that we kind of told the voters when we did it, that we were going to try to do from the different improvements that you see, whether it's the, you know, Craig Park, the cultural center, the Heritage Museum, you know, you see almost every one of our buildings or departments or recreation, even some more sand at Sunset Beach with the great usage with Howard Park, our great uses, I mean, everybody's been out there, we need some sand. So all of those things are our buildings and grounds money that we took from that money, and, you know, the public can look at it and say, and say, there it was, it wasn't on, you know, anything that's here today, and, you know, you got to replenish it next year. So again, when you get those, to look at those in comparison to the things we can do in this penny money, and you can see with both of those that there's a lot of improvements we'll be able to make this year, and a lot of things, again, that we've had to cut because you see those figures here that will get accomplished and they'll last us for a long period of time before we have to worry about them in this budget again.
Mark, I'm curious what the Marina improvements are that you're projecting, because I think that's a great source of revenue for the city if we.
If anybody's been on there with those pylons and those boars, they're about on their last leg, and also we hope for money to improve the bathrooms, the shower, and accessibility to those, but, you know, those pylons and, and boars, and, I mean, it's just on its very last leg, so that and the facilities and the restroom, we hope to stretch that money as far as we can to improve all those things. And we are seeing the revenue there starting to pick up with the economy picking up, all of a sudden, we're getting the revenue back. So in fact, there's even one area, I think we're close to getting the ability to dredge where we've had to, where we had to not have some docking spaces because the dredge, I think we're, we're close to the permitting capability to do that so we can have some more slips available for that. So it's been long needed, and I'm sure some of you have seen over the past couple, some of the letters from, you know, when you're going to do improvements, and we had to slate it in for this penny thing and.
Great to see it used more.
Yes.
Well, one of the things that you mentioned, I'm, I'm glad that, you know, Recreation Department will be getting a new van. I hope it, it rides better than it looks because it looked like it could fall apart any day. And I, I just don't think that, you know, those type of vehicles, you know, we've gotten to a point where, as there was a time when that's the type of vehicle that was prevalent all over, you know, as far as the city, that we would have those. I mean, those vehicles are, to me, as much marketing, if it's going to be like that, we'd at least just take the name off the side of it, that we don't want to be identified. But also thinking about this budget and thinking about on the side, fund balances, you know, it's, the irony of it changes from reserve to that designation is that we should look at the dollars that we are putting into the budget and try to allocate that money towards those items that's going to be one-time expenditures, you know, and not be generally, we put it in there and it's, it's one that is, is funding some things that's going to continue on and on. And I say that because the irony of even looking and saying, how much money is necessary in there, there was a time when it got up to about 10 million and it was rising, that the thought was, you know, how much is enough? And there was some thought that, hey, why do you have all this money and you're not, you know, using it? So there's that balancing point of trying to make sure that we have and buy the things that we need, do the things that's going to make Tarpon into a better place, as well as having it for those emergencies that we hope will never happen, because there is that thought when you have certain things that need to be done, and you say, well, we have so much money that's unassigned or in reserve that people start to question whether we're doing the right thing. So it's a balancing act in terms of making sure that we have enough to provide for the unexpected and still do the things that we need to do to continue to make this a great city, you know, so. But I was going to ask if any of the advisory committee members, I see one, I'm trying to think of who he might be, yeah, I know, but you put your hand up, that if y'all wanted to have something to say, if you could, you know, if you have time, you can give us your advice on where you're at, things that we need to look at.
Well, actually, three of the commissioners are past members of the Budget Advisory Committee, so they understand where we're coming from as we go through the budget review process. I want to second your comments, and we see them as very heartfelt. Your organization does an incredible job. It's gotten better and better and better at budgeting. The organization that, that Mark works with is doing an outstanding job. They've come and presented to us their individual budgets, given us a chance to look at their vision, their objectives, things they're trying to get done, and I think their budgets are very, very well-prepared. I don't know, as, as you commented about your iPad, you guys have an iPad within your organization. If you ever lose Ari, you are just going to be in more trouble than you're ever going to be able to, to understand. She is the only person that can answer questions from the budget review, and obviously, she can do it here with you guys as well. She is outstanding, and the numbers she puts forward, considering the breadth and depth that she has to go to, are outstanding, and we find them very helpful as we go through the process. I think the, the budget you've received is reasonably fair. I think there are, as have been raised, issues with what the policies are that you, as the commission, want to relook at, whether you want to go in these directions, add new functions in these directions. I answered at Townsend, you said, how much has gone in, what have we used, where's it gone? That page that's in your presentation, the difference between those two lines tells you what was added and then what was taken out each year. So that we came to the high point, as Mark's presentation said, in about 2010, then it started to decline, and the reserve got down to presumably, as he says, forecast this year for about 8.5 million. Those numbers, by the way, are current dollars, they're not constant dollars, so they aren't as big as they were maybe 10 years ago because there's been inflation. We're looking at them coming down, and you're right, it's going to be down into the 7 million the next time. Remember, the reason those change, as Ari continues to tell us, things don't happen immediately. When the prices fell on homes, we didn't see it till two years later, because we were paying those prices November later and then getting those checks 18 to 24 months later. So they're a little out of sync, and as we're starting to get better now, we're reflecting the increase that you're seeing in, in tax receipts, rightly so. I'll raise one point that we took as sort of an interesting aside in the, in the Budget Advisory. One of your biggest pieces added to salary, particularly in the, in the Fire Department, is starting to catch up with their retirement programs, to refund their retirement, the retirement trust funds. We've looked again, we're getting some information, we'd like to find out how big that is, is it a problem, and do we continue, expect to see it continue, et cetera. But one of the points that that raises is you guys picked two and a half, interesting number, of the advisors to the investment fund for those retirement packages, both for the, for the fire and for the police. If they don't do a good job on selecting and managing those accounts, we pay for it as taxpayers. So there is some, the people that you pick, you, I don't mean to preach, but we would like to see have really good financial backgrounds so that they can be helpful in determining what the investments are for both the police and the, and the fire, and I think you've got one or two new ones coming up. So it is one where skill base is particularly critical, and if they don't do a good job, we, we, the city, have to make up the shortfall in what the, the forecasts had been as to how much they should have earned. If they didn't earn that, then the city will make that up. An issue we've got a particularly big hit, I think it's a 41% of salary hit that's coming into the police, that's got other reasons as well, but we thought that might be one, so we're looking at it. Overall, I think you're on the right direction. I think the budget is reasonable for what we've got for the city, and I think Mark's doing a good job of getting those numbers down on the continuing business. It would be interesting, and we've got a couple people on the, on the committee who continue to ask as the presentations are made, what didn't you do this year? What would you like to have budgeted? What was, what's interesting, and what would be to the benefit of Tarpon Springs if the funds were available? Is there any, not incrementally 2% off of every title, but what chunk would you like and what would you do with it? I think that's a good continuing question you can ask yourselves. Townsend's asked that for a couple of areas, would you do that and what would you put in? I think there are things that we ought to look at, and we don't have all the knowledge. All of the people out there who run this city have that knowledge, and we ought to be looking for some of those as additions, and at least look at them as potential additions, as chunks into the budget to make this continuing to be the all-American city. Thanks. And I'd invite any of the other committee members to speak if they'd like. Roger Saloo, 967 Bay Shore Drive, Tarpon Springs. Roger Salu, nine-six-seven Bay Shore Drive, Tarpon Springs.
I, I don't see the other gentleman moving yet, but as we, uh, do this, you always are welcome, we appreciate, uh, Mr. Salu's insight, and, uh, one of the things is too, what you touched on as we look at this budget, is that, you know, at some point in time, as, um, Ms. Limon continually do what she's doing, we have to continually assess, as the city manager kind of alluded to, is that, you know, do we have the right staff in place? I know we've done some reorganization, and the right size, and, and the rest, but to make sure that we can handle, um, the business of the city, uh, and to do it in a manner that's going to be, uh, appropriate for us, uh, continuing to, uh, have people that want to do business with us, you know, and there's that point where you need to have additional people, simply because, you know, time is money, and people don't want to be wasting time trying to get some permits, or other things that they need to get done, when they can do that somewhere else and do it faster, so, um, we look to Mark, as we always do, to continue to do a good job of, uh, letting us know that, uh, you know, we have to bite the bullet, sometimes it's for our staff that's concerned, and we know that's going to cost us a little bit more, but those type of things do pay off in the future, so. Any other additional comments anyone have, any thing that you might need besides, you know, a few more dollars more?
And again, let me emphasize, if there's something that comes up between now and August seventh, just call, email, and, uh, as we think, and as you go through the budgets again, as we're doing, um, just, again, just send it to me, call me, and, uh, I've got the list of what you said tonight, so any additions or anything else, any other information you come up with, if you get questions from citizens that want to ask, or that, um, again, just, I'll add it to this list, and call me, email me, talk to me, and, uh, we'll prepare all those that are in, and any new information we got, and updates to this presentation, uh, we'll bring those forward to you August seventh.
Okay. And I'd just say, you know, for everybody, it's, you know, I almost feel some air, I don't think it's the air conditioner, it might be the fan, you know, so we're continually cutting back, trying to save a few dollars, you know? Uh, something else, then we'll adjourn this meeting at eight oh two.
Out of the money there, we're, we're out of the money. Very impressive. Keep going. Good night. It's got to get, it can only get better, it's so hot. Well, did you enjoy it?
See, I don't remember, I know somehow we're going to have, there was a way to get-
I'm glad you enjoyed it.
I mean, I know, I'm only thirty-one, my parents made me come, I lived in-
Yeah, well, it's, 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 I don't know.
How you doing today, sir? I'm doing well. Are you still doing it? Well, that's good. So, what part of the year?
I went to school in Michigan, and they had no air conditioning in the dorms, in that first month.